Do you have any super duper surprises?
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 4th, 2015, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have, the first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We're here tonight to conduct six public hearings. I'd like to welcome everybody that came tonight to participate in the public hearing process. The first public hearing is an annexation petition for approximately 11.38 acres located at 4439 Manson Pike. Mr. R. Lee Roberts Jr. is applicant.
Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and good evening members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight, as you mentioned, is an annexation petition located at 4439 Manson Pike. The subject property is located along the south side of Manson Pike, just to the west of the existing city limits. You'll see on the map in front of you, it is directly adjacent to several city subdivisions, including Oakton, Blackman Burrows, and Princeton Oaks, just to the east of State Route 840. Property owner has petitioned the city for annexation in order to market the property with the benefit of city provided services. Mr. Roberts is not a developer and he does not wish to develop the property, however, he wishes to be able to market the property and sell it for potential development in the future and sees the benefit of being located in the city and the services that can be provided by the city to this property if annexed. The property is contiguous with the existing city limits, it is within the city's urban growth boundary, and the owner has petitioned for annexation. Attached with your agenda materials is the Annexation Feasibility Study and Plan of Services, which demonstrates that the city can provide services to the subject property. As I mentioned, the property owner doesn't have any specific development intentions for the property. The property since zoned residential in the county will receive an interim zoning classification of RS-15 if annexed into the city. A zoning request for the property may be forthcoming at some point in the future, but the applicant did not, is making this request for the benefit of city provided services and does not have a specific zoning designation in mind at the moment. As such, it will remain RS-15 if annexed, as an interim zoning classification. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this annexation petition, after which it will need to discuss the matter and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Mr. Bill Jakes, representing Mr. Roberts, is present if you have any questions for him as the applicant. And I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? Okay, before we go any further, I'd like to say that I will recuse myself from voting or discussing this item. Mr. Jakes is affiliate of mine, and I will not be participating in the voting or the discussion pertaining to this. I will continue to share the meeting though and direct the meeting from that end. If you've never been here before, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. You'll be given the opportunity to come forward to speak on each public hearing. Please, when you come to the microphone, state your name and give your address for the record. And if you have any questions, we'll try to make note of those and the staff will try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. Please make all your comments to the Planning Commission itself, nobody in the audience. That being said, I'll open the public hearing for this first matter and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions for the applicant, for members of the Planning Commission?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The second item on today's agenda is to, the annexation petition for approximately 7.78 acres located along the east side of Elam Road, HAK LLC is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Subject property, as you mentioned, is located along the east side of Elam Road. The property owners, and it's a group of three property owners collectively known as HAK LLC, have requested annexation of this property, which is 7.78 acres in area. There's a companion zoning request of RM-16, which will be the next item on the agenda. But this, this public hearing is simply for the annexation of the property. To orient you a little bit more, as in addition to the property being along the east side of Elam Road, it is directly to the north of the tract owned by Mr. Kirby and Mr. Hale, where the Kirby Hale Surface Station is currently under construction, as well as just to the north of the intersection of Elam Road and Joby Jackson Parkway at exit 84 off of I-24. Also, to the east of the subject property is the Elam Farms Warehouse Development, which some of you may recall came to the Planning Commission under the name of the Panatoni The applicants have, have petitioned annexation. No other properties are necessary to be annexed in order to annex this property as it is contiguous with the existing city limits on two sides. No right-of-way has been included with this annexation request. The Annexation Feasibility Study and Plan of Services is located in your agenda materials. The city will be able to provide services to this property upon development. It is a vacant tract right now, and the applicants do have development intentions for the property. Sewer is not currently available to the property, but it is just to the south of the subject property and can be extended relatively easily to serve the subject property upon development. The property is contiguous with the existing city limits and is within the city's urban growth boundary and has been petitioned for annexation. Mr. Jeff Reed is representing the developers. If you have any questions for him, I think he might have a brief presentation during the zoning hearing. But with that being said, we do need to conduct a public hearing and recommend, formulate a recommendation for City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as will the applicants.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Blomley? Mr. Reed, do you have anything for this portion of the agenda? Okay, thank you. If there's no questions, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
You're on.
Anybody at all for the annexation request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions from members of the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C now is the same property, but the rezoning application of approximately .7 acres located along the east side of Elam Road to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM-16 and .7, 7.78 acres to be zoned, RM-16 simultaneous annexation, HAK LLC is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. This is the subject, the same property that we, that we discussed at the annexation matter, which was the last item on the agenda, 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road. And in addition to that 7.78 acres, there is .7 acres just to the south of that property for a total of 8.48 acres. The .7 acres to the south is already in the city limits and is zoned Commercial Highway. So the applicants are looking to, to combine that .7 acres and the 7.78 acres in order to construct a new multifamily development. Then they are requesting an RM-16 zoning for both properties. The property to the south, as I mentioned previously, is where the applicants are developing the Kirby Hale Service Station, right at the corner of Joby Jackson Parkway and Elam Road. The subject property to the north and across Elam Road are still in the unincorporated county. The property to the east of the subject property is zoned light industrial and is, as I mentioned, a part of the Elam Farms Warehouse Development. To the south is zoned Commercial Highway, and further to the south across Joby Jackson Parkway is also zoned Commercial Highway. There is a single-family residence on the property directly to the north in the unincorporated If the rezoning is successful, the applicants could develop approximately 136 units by right on the 8.48 acres. And as you know, the zoning ordinance does make provisions for density bonuses if, if certain amenities are provided in multifamily developments. So there is the potential to exceed the 16 dwelling units per acre with the provision of certain amenities. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the City Council. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Jeff Reed is representing the applicants, and I believe he has a few words that he would like to say. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions before I invite Mr. Reed up? Mr. Reed, please.
Thanks for your attention tonight. This is the request of HAK for the rezoning and annexation of a parcel there on Elam Road to RM-16. As you've heard tonight, the real plans for this project is going to be for an apartment complex, which is going to be a mid to higher-end apartment complex there, which would consist, right now, we're planning on 144 units. The complex would have a pool, it would have common areas, clubhouse, playground areas, and be a higher-end apartment-type project. And for an area which we believe to be underserved by apartment complexes today, of course, this is a newly area, new area for Murfreesboro, which is kind of recently only developing now. There's no apartment complexes there in the immediate area for it, with its access to the interstate and the road situation that it is currently out there, we think is a good location for apartment complex. Based on the marketing studies we've done in the area, there is still a need for additional apartments in our community. It definitely serves a part of our community, which we believe is still underserved here in the Murfreesboro area. And we do like, I like, if it's okay with the body tonight, ask that, we have Gene Klein, who's with us tonight, who's with MMC, who handles a number of apartment projects in our area to address the current marketing situation for apartments in the Murfreesboro area. So if it's acceptable, we'd like to ask Gene Klein to address you for a few minutes.
Thank you Chairman Lamb and Commission members for allowing us to come before you this evening. I'm Jean Meredith Klein, and I'm the owner and president of Management Marketing Concepts. I live at 777-
Hold that microphone a little closer. Yeah.
Well, you may not want to hear this. I live at 777 West Jefferson Pike, out in the Walter Hill community. And we're in the multifamily housing industry, and we are a customer service business, and we strive to find our customers what they are looking for. We manage 2,000 units throughout Rutherford County, and only Rutherford County. We're in the position to be in touch with people every day who are coming to our market from all over the country and internationally. They're coming for many reasons, just a few would be the jobs, retirement. We are one of only three states in the nation that do not have a state income tax, so that's important to retirees or people moving here. The mild climate, the low cost, and the high quality of life here in Rutherford County. And some to be near but outside the Nashville metropolitan area. Locally, in the Daily News Journal, just a few weeks ago, an article had been taken from the Associated Press that stated the housing market has struggled to fully rebound since the recession ended more than five years ago. Many potential buyers lack the savings and strong credit history needed to buy a home. Higher home prices and stagnant incomes have also curtailed buying. Many are convinced that there's been a fundamental shift in attitudes toward homeownership that may last for many years. Real-time economics reported that homeownership is potentially out of reach for nearly a third of Americans. According to the author, 69% of people age 18 to 49, and 60% of those from 30 to 49, lost ground during the recession. It's likely that these groups, who are the most likely first-time and move-up homebuyers, took a hit to their credit scores. Their data indicate that even if they've recovered from the worst, they may not be able to get a mortgage. In 2011, multifamily publications predicted that the next housing crisis after the Great Recession would be the lack of product when the economy rebounds. In 1996, we developed Northville Commons, which was the first new development in Rutherford County for about 12 years. There was a severe shortage of available supply in every market segment. So 7,000 units was what was here in 1996. Now, that product is now 25 to 40 years old. I've provided a graph that you'll note, it kind of gives you the supply that has come online since the year 2002. And in the years of 2004 and 2005, we saw 2,600 units come online. Then it was pretty flat, 2006, 2007, 2008 was the peak. Then 2009 only had 88 units, 2010, 254, 2011, only eight units. So the new development that we've seen in the last three years totals 2,500 units, 2,528. So that, for the last five years, is less than what we did for those in 2004 and 2005. And that product in 2004 and 2005 is now 10 years old. Okay? So you see the years that it was flat. Okay, so while we've added 2,500 units in the previous three years, we're still well behind the national average. It is estimated that 33% of the population are renters. And I have studied this all through my 26-year career here as a management company. And that's the statistic, that's what it is nationally. If you took our county population, which is 268,000, and you divided that by the 17,000 units we have, we have half the supply, that is the national average. We're right at 16%, 15.99. So we started out behind many years ago. And of those units that have been added, if we had 7,000 in 1996 and we've got 17 now, 2,000 of those were strictly MTSU student housing-type developments, where they rent by the bedroom. They're certainly not what would be considered a product that would be the norm, or what most people would want. And we are all very familiar with the population growth that we've had and what is predicted. So when you consider that our population is predicted to double within the next, is it 20 years that they're saying that? Well, as far as apartments go, when our city's population reached 80,000, we began seeing outside players in the market, and we also saw definite submarkets emerge. In the past, you might say, or in 1996, you went wherever that you found the available housing. And then, of course, as the city grew and we added shopping centers and we had subdivisions and we built new schools, then you saw people that wanted to be in a specific market. So we feel like that the Joby Jackson area is a new emerging submarket that is underserved, as Mr. Reed said. The National Apartment Overview says that multifamily housing will only become more important as it is better suited than single-family housing to meeting critical national goals such as energy independence and sustainable development. Multifamily housing will only grow in importance as these policies take center stage as the largest generation of children below the age of 20 in the history of the US reaches adulthood from 2000 to 2020. And we're only five years away from that date. And as the number of seniors begin to skyrocket at a time when the mortgage credit standards have tightened. The national vacancy rate, and I've provided you some Greater Nashville Apartment Association information in there, which has Murfreesboro, it has the submarkets of Murfreesboro and Smyrna. And so the national vacancy rate ended the year at 4.7%. Our local market is even stronger at 2.95%, so less than three. So job gains and a sustained preference for multifamily renting has stimulated renter household formations. And of course, we all know homeownership has drifted down to a 19-year low of 64.4%. So demographics, jobs, and income growth drive housing demand. The pace of household creation will rise as approximately 1.6 million 20- to 30-year-olds come of age over the next five years. With unemployment rates falling for this group, they will support increasing income growth. Considering 2/3 of these young adults typically rent, apartment demand should remain strong. Right now, the absorption rates on the new product that have been added are very strong. You've got Beldon, and you've got Arbor Brook, and you've got Henley Station, and you've got 3343 Memorial, which just came online last Thursday. And that is one that we manage. It is a very nice product. It is the first in Rutherford County to have elevators. It's four stories, and the rents are high. And we are leasing very well, about a unit a day is what we've had since we've been opening. I think we already had 10 applications before we opened the doors. You see, and I've checked with Beldon and Arbor Brook, and they are, they're filling up just as quickly as they bring units online. So what they're doing, of course, is bringing units online and then going ahead and leasing them. And so they might have 35 units, might be all that they've got online, but they're all taken. You know, when you talk to the people who are out there that are coming this direction, and of course, the internet has just changed the whole world, you know, how you market and how they find you. And so we ask, where are you coming from? What brings you here? Of course, I'm a native Tennessean, but that's rare now. I'm from Macon County, which is just north of Murfreesboro. You know, they come for all kinds of reasons. And so many times, when they're moving here, they want new. You know, I'll say, how about considering St. Andrews, which is over on that side of town? Well, it's nice, but I really want something new. So you've got the people who are moving in, you've also got the people who are moving out from home with their parents, you've got the people who are divorcing, you've got grandparents who want to come. This area is already, has renters in it. We manage 400 houses, and we have a segment of properties in that area, right now, I can't tell you the name of the street. But there's also condominiums, which is multifamily, that have renters in there, in there. And we feel like this emerging submarket, all they need, or what is lacking, is a product which offers the amenities such as a clubhouse, fitness center, pool, without the hassle of maintenance and lawn care. So it goes back to location, location, location. When you look at the traffic count, I've given you some information on that, when you look at the traffic count, the traffic count on Joby Jackson's 5,000 a day, that's not a residential subdivision. US Highway 41, new the entrance is almost 10,000. Highway 231, where Joby Jackson is going to, is 32,000, and the interstate, I think, is like 43,000. So these, these connectors, as far as the Joby Jackson, will connect you to lots of subdivisions and lots of families out that way. And there's already lots of families that, our little area is more industrial. It's high visibility, which is what you want, for people to be able to see you and to identify that there is someplace for them to live. You'll have commuters from Tallahama and Manchester and all those other places that'll choose to come there that may drive into Nashville. So absorption is high, we feel like the need is there, we feel like the, the strength of the market is there, and we feel like the economy is there. Is there anything I can answer for you all, or that you have questions?
Good report, thank you Ms. Klein.
Thank you.
So Commission members and Chairman, I guess we, we think the proximity of this particular location is really good for an apartment-type complex, it's there on the edge of the interstate. There's nothing else close to it for apartment housing, for people who are looking, who are new to the area and looking for ready access to the interstate, they have that there. This will be a nicer type apartment project with a lot of amenities, is what people are looking for today. So we think it will be an asset to Murfreesboro, and for that reason, we respectfully request the rezoning we're applying for tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing now and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, in that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Young.
One of the things I always look at is when we're looking into rezoning, is what else could the property be? It's 7.7 acres. It's not big enough to be a commercial application, even though it's very close to commercial applications. I can't see why anyone in the world would want to build a house on this property. So I think this use is well-suited, especially with its location. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D is a rezoning application for approximately .75 acres located at 1516, excuse me, East Main Street to be rezoned from RS-15 to RM-16. Autumn Woods Partnership GP is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. One thing that I did want to mention with regard to the last application, just so we can get in the record, there were a number of letters provided to us by the applicant and submitted with regards to that request, and we will get that in the file.
Yeah.
And those have been provided to the Planning Commission. Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier. Our fourth public hearing, as you mentioned, is a rezoning request from RS-15 to RM-16 along the south side of East Main Street. More specifically, it's at 1516 East Main Street on the block that is in between South Baird and Jupiter. The property is about 3/4 of an acre. There's currently a single-family residence on the property, and the applicants have, have put a contract on the property, and they may have closed by now, I'm not certain, but they had a contract on the property at the time of application. And they also had a contract on the property directly to the east, which is already zoned RM-16. So they have requested RM-16 for this .75 acre parcel in order to combine it with the larger tract, in order to develop a multifamily development on the subject property. With the total acreage, which would be about 5.75 acres, that would yield approximately 92 multifamily units on the subject property, on the subject property combined with the adjacent property. By itself, if it were to be developed by itself, that would be about 10 or 11 units. And of course, as I mentioned in the previous public hearing, in addition to the units that are allowed by right in the RM-16 zone, additional units may be permitted if certain amenities are provided on site. Now, to orient you a little bit to the surrounding area and the surrounding zoning, we do have the map in front of us. As I mentioned, the subject property to the, or the property to the east is already zoned RM-16. The south side of East Main Street, from Middle Tennessee Boulevard at the Boulevard Bar and Grill, the East Main Village Development, from that point to the subject property is zoned RM-16 on the south side of East Main Street. So the only exceptions to that are the subject property, which is zoned RS-15, and the property directly adjacent to the west, which is also zoned RS-15, and has a single-family residence and an apartment on it. The property owner of that property directly to the west has, has discussed- He wanted to look and see how this particular application went, and also to evaluate what zoning classifications might be appropriate for his property. And the neighboring property owner is in attendance today as well. But the, directly across the street is zoned commercial local and is developed with a small commercial node that contains Far East Restaurant. A little bit further to the east and to the south is additional RS15 zoning. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And of course, the Planning Commission will need to formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Mr. Chad Gilbert is here, representing the applicants. If you have any questions for him, I don't know that he has a formal presentation, but he'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay.
I have questions. Mr. Blomley, you had mentioned the potential number of units on any particular piece of property. Are you compensating for the fact that there's parking in streets and offsets and pools and clubhouses? And then, how do you factor in that?
Yes, sir. With the RM16 zoning, it's multifamily residential with a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre. Now, that's the maximum density under the zoning. Now, as I mentioned, they can achieve a higher density with certain amenities. But typically, designers, depending on the constraints of the site, may be able to achieve that maximum density, or because of constraints on the site, they may not be able to achieve that density, whether there are, you know, just hypothetically wetlands on the property or sensitive drainage areas. So there may be limiting factors on the site, as there are on any site. But the density is what would be allowed, best-case scenario. But once you factor in the environmental factors, as well as landscaping requirements, parking requirements, sometimes the actual yield can be a little bit, a little bit less.
And, you know, it seems like that when we say maximum, we really very seldom get maximum because of those other things that you talked about.
That's correct. Sometimes, you know, there is a near-perfect site where an engineer can design to those maximum numbers. Other times, as we see frequently, that is not the case.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Did you say the representative did not have a presentation?
I don't believe he does, but Mr. Gilbert is in attendance today, if the Planning Commission has any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. That being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Just coming along up, yes, sir. Please just state your name, if you would.
This is my first time with.
It's okay.
With this process. My name is Michael Humnicki. I represent myself and my wife, Deana Young. We live at 1710 East Main Street. I have 10 copies of these. I'm basically going to read the statement, and we'll see if there's any questions. We just found out about this via the sign that was buried in the weeds on 1775. We don't read the newspaper to look for the legal notice, so it's a little quick. And I don't think I, we have, I'm of the opinion that a lot of the neighbors didn't know this was happening. So I had that as an introductory comment. So we have not had access to any formal rezoning impact study done by the city or this committee concerning this action. We believe a formal study should be done and distributed to the greater neighborhood, not to this, just to those properties identified 250 feet from the existing property. I was given that 250-feet number by the representative of the zoning committee. Rezoning this property and the development of apartments would impact the greater neighborhood on East Main Street. There would be significant increased traffic. The existing two-lane street would be more congested during morning and evening hours if the zoning is approved. Would East Main Street have to be widened to four lanes to accommodate the increased vehicular traffic? Would sidewalks, which do not exist now on both sides, have to be built to accommodate the increased pedestrian traffic in the 1500, 1600, and 1700 blocks on East Main Street? The increased street traffic will also impact the safety of children attending nearby Hodd Wood Elementary School because of the increased congestion on nearby streets, which would be Apollo and Jupiter. Those are the ones that feed off Main over to the elementary school. This would be particularly noticeable around drop-off and pickup times. There could be possible increased East Main Street traffic following impacting Central Magnet. If you go down there, and when school starts in the morning, the traffic really backs up, even now. I would presume that if you had apartments with 250 or 250 more people on East Main Street, it's just going to make the traffic worse. There is also a potential increase of children needing to attend Hodd Wood Elementary School, which my grandchildren do attend. It would impact the school budgets for the increased, and the social services, like free breakfast and lunch programs, for any students who would be living in those apartments, who would be going to that residential elementary school. We believe those should be understood before any committee would make a formal decision. And finally, the increase in the neighborhood population resulting from these new apartment residents would potentially impact the city police department. This needs to be understood before any rezoning would be approved. So I ask that these concerns be addressed because of their possible cost impacts for making your final decision regarding the rezoning of this property. My additional comment is, I'm aware that 1600 was historically zoned, so I, you know, I'm not making any comment that that should be changed. Just don't believe that it should be bigger and more apartments. So my position, I just want to understand, is to the rezoning, to the specific property in mind here, with these concerns of additional traffic and impacts on the schools. So that's it. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Humnicki. Appreciate you coming forward, and welcome to Murfreesboro.
And the sidewalks would be required.
Anybody else?
Front and side.
Anybody at all? Anybody coming forward? I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Blomley, you may have answered this, but, so, without this addition, or rezoning that we're looking at, the applicant would have the right to have how many units as it sits today?
Approximately 80 or 82.
So the adding this parcel would add how many possible units?
About 10 or 11.
Any other comments?
To address Mr. Henicki's, some of his comments, we have, this city, last year, or was it the year before, last year, we did a study of the effects of apartments of the schools. So that's factored in. In this particular case, I believe these are going to be more college student apartments than they would be adult apartments, per se. So I think the effect on the school would be very limited. Anytime you do anything in this city, it affects traffic. So I agree with you, to a certain extent, there's not going to be, there will be increased traffic, not. In all developments, we require sidewalks on both sides of the street. Is that correct? So that would answer one of your comments.
Well, in this particular instance, with it having.
Jupiter has sidewalks on it now, all the way from the top of the hill down to Main Street.
Well, and in this instance, with it being a potential multifamily development on a substandard street, East Main Street, our standard protocol is to evaluate the condition of the street that it fronts on and look for any possible road improvements.
Turning lanes?
Turn lanes, sidewalks, road improvements adjacent to that property. And if it's not prudent to move forward with improvements at that time, then we evaluate the need to see if escrow would be required for future improvements. So then, that's just standard protocol, whenever we have any new site on a substandard street, to evaluate what improvements in the public right-of-way would be needed. And if there are any additional questions about that, Mr. Sam Huddleston from our Engineering Department is available as well.
One other comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Halliburton pointed out that if we denied this, they could still bill 88 apartments?
Approximately 80 or 82.
Okay. Any other?
I have a question for Mr. Ives. What is that protocol so far as publication for hearings, public hearings? Where do we go for the media for public hearing notifications?
I believe Mr. Blomley can probably answer the detail.
And I can't answer the detail, and Mr. Ornella spares the brunt of the work on that. We do actually four things now. It used to, we said we would, we do three things, but now with the advent of our, of the Internet, the advent of the Internet is probably not the right thing to say, it's been around for quite a while. But we do four things. We post the notice on our website of all the public hearings that are going to be before the Planning Commission. We put our legal notice in the Murfreesboro Post. We send notices out to property owners and tenants within 250 feet of the subject property. We generate that list using our geographic information systems, and we post a sign on the property. So those are the four ways that we attempt to get word out about public hearings.
And generally, when we send notices to those people within 250 feet, if it is a, very much a controversial item, they generally will get out and gather the troops, so to speak, and mobilize the neighborhood.
Yeah, in many instances, the tools that we use to notify the public, one person will see a sign and tell another person, one person will get a notice and tell another person, so it's very much a word-of-mouth thing as well.
We do our best to get the word out and what we're saying, Mr. Humnicki. It's not a, it's not a secret. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item E is Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive, a right-of-way abandonment request for 0.046 acres, a right-of-way located east of Memorial Boulevard. Mr. Bobby Kirby is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The subject property, as you mentioned, is part of the right-of-way of Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive, which is the public street at the newly signalized intersection at the northwest corner of the new Walmart development on Memorial Boulevard. The property owner to the north has requested that the city abandon some excess right-of-way that is located in Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive. That right-of-way was dedicated by Walmart during the course of its development, and as staff has reviewed the existing roadway, as well as future lane improvements, they've determined that there is additional right-of-way that is unnecessary for those future improvements. That excess right-of-way could potentially assist in a future development to the north of the subject property. We actually received a site plan for it on Monday, and it will likely be on the agenda at your day meeting on the 18th. So Mr. Kirby has requested the abandonment of this right-of-way, and anytime that we have a right-of-way abandonment, it does require a public hearing before the Planning Commission. And then after the Planning Commission, the recommendation of the Planning Commission goes to the City Council for ratification. Much like mandatory referrals, it does not require another public hearing at the City Council level, but does require ratification by the City Council after action by the Planning Commission. So Mr. Kirby has requested the abandonment of this excess right-of-way, and his engineer has submitted an exhibit showing the exact dimensions of what has been requested to be abandoned. If we could put the map back up on the screen, as you can tell, it's a very small sliver of right-of-way at the very northern end of Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive. Staff has completed a study of the abandonment of this right-of-way and the impact that it would have on various utilities and city service providers. And it appears that the abandonment of the right-of-way can be accomplished as a matter of routine and relatively easily. However, if the Planning Commission does approve the abandonment request, staff does recommend the following three conditions of approval. A temporary slope and construction easement must be retained for future roadway improvements. Number two, the applicant must provide a legal description and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents, excuse me. And number three, all legal documents, including a required waiver from the party originally dedicating the right-of-way, which would be Walmart, are subject to the approval of the city attorney. Since Walmart dedicated the right-of-way, the applicant will need to obtain a waiver from Walmart stating that it does not want the right-of-way back in its possession, the little sliver of excess right-of-way. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then take action, and then it will be forwarded to the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Mr. Ives is very familiar with the request as well, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no other questions from the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Lamb will be standing for voting on this item.
Chairman, I make motion for approval, subject to the conditions that were listed, depending on the other staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing this evening is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the designation of the floodplain administrator. Planning Staff is applicant.
I think I'll take that one, Chairman.
I think so, Gary.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Our current zoning ordinance, as well as FEMA, requires us to have a position that we call the floodzone administrator. That currently resides with the planning director. As stated in our zoning ordinance, we're proposing to allow the city manager to make an appointment of that. What we found out is staff changes, we need the flexibility to maybe move that job around. And we would ask that you hold a public hearing, make a recommendation to council after making a decision on this item.
Good. Any other questions?
What's he saying?
If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward. It's a hot topic.
Don't rush the podium.
Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. This is a housekeeping-type thing, and I think it's probably better done the way you want to do it here, Gary, so.
I definitely think so.
Yes, you do.
Give him what he wants.
If there's no other comments, we're ready for a motion.
Go ahead. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, that participated. Staff comments? Gary?
I have no staff comments. Mr. Blomley?
None from me.
Okay. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned. Good meeting, Les.
Especially my opinion.
It's pretty good.
Begging.
No. I'm digging my own hole.